Okay Chairman, go.
Okay, three, two, one, here we go. Okay, welcome to yet again another special meeting of the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners. This is a virtual meeting on top of a special meeting. It is Tuesday, November 10th at 1:30 PM. So with that, we will call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
President.
President.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Present.
Chairman Meister.
Present. Okay, next item, please.
New business, Item A, COVID-19 update.
Okay, I will hand this to Mr. Stoltz, I believe.
Thank you Chairman, good afternoon Commissioners, and thank you for allowing a special meeting in a week when we already had a special meeting planned for Thursday. So I appreciate the quick notice on this and the quick time to get around. The reason we are here today is ultimately going to be twofold, but the main reason is is that we have seen some continued and sustained number of COVID cases and rates of positive infection over about the last three to four weeks. This sustained pattern seems to be growing. We had 1,206 new cases from Friday to Monday of this past week. And our infection rates on the dashboard today, the last I checked before coming in here, stood at 21.6% on the rolling 14-day average. In addition to these numbers, we have a continued and sustained number of hospitalizations, including patient totals and ICU admissions related to COVID. Based on numbers that we received from Wesley and Via Christi yesterday, the patient totals is at 178 as of yesterday at 1:00 or 11 o'clock yesterday, 178. And the ICU COVID patient number was at 80. More disturbing is the trajectory that the hospital numbers are on and the relationship we have seen between number of infection cases versus hospital admissions versus mortality rates. Dr. Antonio's from Via Christi brought up during the meeting yesterday that for the last three weeks, or he's in his analysis, that we seem to be doubling hospital patients every two weeks. So every two weeks, we see a doubling of number. So if this trajectory does not change, for example, two weeks from today, our patient total could be into the 300s, approaching 350 and more cases. We have seen through the history of this virus since last March, that as infection numbers go up, within two to four weeks, hospital admission numbers seem to slightly spike with that. And then as those numbers spike, mortality rates seem to spike. So it's imperative, I think that we talk about what we can do to bring the infection numbers down, which ultimately over time would help us with hospital numbers. So based on these trends and these matters, this is the reason and scope of this special meeting today. Dr. Minz, who is on Zoom with us, has proposed or is proposing an amendment to his current health order, which he has signed and put out within the last hour. I'd like Dr. Minz to give a few statements on his order and then have Justin Wagner, who helped craft his ideas and vision into the order, to actually take the podium and talk us through in some detail the order and what the significant changes are from this order versus the one that Dr. Minz had previously put forth. And then one thing just to quickly add, and then afterwards, we're going to present to the Commission a consideration for an enforcement methodology to go forward with and make sure that Dr. Minz, to the best of our community's ability, to stay within the guidelines of what this order is suggesting. So Dr. Minz, I'll turn it over to you, sir, and to give some comments, and then we'll bring Justin to the podium.
Good afternoon, Dr. Minz, welcome to the meeting. Dr. Minz, you're...
You're on mute.
Obviously, this is not the kind of event I could come and share with you all. Hopefully some days I can share with you better news, but unfortunately, our numbers are climbing at an alarming rate, as fast as they've ever climbed, and the numbers are higher than they ever have been, much higher than they were last spring. It's difficult for us to determine the exact cause of the rise, but we can tell you this is not restricted to Sedgwick County. It's occurring throughout the state and in much of the Midwest. We know that the factors that are causing the rise are probably common to a number of the communities in this region. I can speculate that maybe it's partly due to the fact that the weather is turning colder as this morning has suggested, and that people are spending more time indoors than they had been earlier in the year. But we also have talked to friends of ours, colleagues of ours, that have been out in the community on weekends and weekdays, and there's a general observation that the compliance with our previous order is not optimal, that they have gone to social events, receptions, other activities where there's larger groups of people, and the mask mandate is poorly observed. I believe that to some degree, although I can't quantitate it, that putting the schools back in session, which leads to more people contacting outside their family unit, has contributed somewhat. I think the schools are trying to do a good job of limiting that with the classroom, but back with the schools, back in session, we're also having a lot of school sporting events back and spectators watching those. Again, I cannot testify that's the major cause, I just think it is a component. I think large family gatherings are contributing, and one of our fears about the numbers now, we know that there are going to be more family gatherings this month and next month as we're entering the traditional holiday season, in which it's common for families to come back in large numbers to renew separation they've had throughout the year. And so we are somewhat concerned about what impact it will have on our already climbing numbers, and I think that's the big concerns that the hospitals and healthcare workers have, is what, where is the ceiling? Will this continue going up? It cannot keep going up this rate for us to maintain what this community needs in terms of healthcare. So with all those potential factors, we think we need to tighten things up. I am very concerned about trying to restrict these activities that lead to this increased rate, but maintaining our economy. I understand that's a delicate balance, and we have discussed at length on how to do both things simultaneously, and that is not easy. But I think we're going to have to do two main things. We're going to have to put further limits on the size of gatherings, we're going to have to put limits on the kind of sports activities, maybe at least in terms of quantity, if not permitting them. So Justin will go over the orders that will attempt to do that. But a second thing I think we need to do is figure out how we can encourage better compliance with the order. I don't think the past order was wrong, I don't think it was inaccurate, I just don't think it's being observed as much as we need to observe it in order to keep these numbers down. So it's not in the order, but we're going to have to brainstorm together on how we can communicate with our community and our population to convince them that this is not a hoax, it's not a myth, it's not something that only happens to other people. It happens to you, it happens to your neighbors, it happens to your family. In order for them to understand why wearing the mask is so important and why avoiding these large groups where there's lots of mingling without masks, without six-foot separation is leading to the increased cases. So with that, I'll turn it over to Justin, let him review with you the actual changes in the order from our last one.
All right, Justin, you're up. And then afterward, Justin has finished, Commissioners will all be available for questions.
Good afternoon Commissioners, Justin Wagner, Assistant County Counselor. I'll go through what would be a, I'd consider a summary of the changes that are within Dr. Minz's new order. First, I'd start with Section 1.2 and make clear that the language in Dr. Minz's order has added language to make it incumbent upon businesses and organizations to inform members of the public about the requirement to wear masks, also about that patrons within their businesses would need to express an exemption to the mask requirement if they're not wearing one, and also that the mere existence of possible exemptions would not release the business organization from its duty to ensure that patrons would comply with the order. In other words, they couldn't just assume that there would be an exemption that would apply to that person not wearing a mask. Moving on to Section 2, I would point out, Dr. Minz's previous orders have incorporated Phase 2 from the Governor's Executive Order, and Phase 2 of the Governor's Executive Order was a handful of months ago. His new order just includes all the terms and conditions within the actual order, there's no incorporation of the Governor's prior executive order. It still has in place the requirement that you're supposed to maintain six feet of social distance from other people unless you reside with that person. And then it does have exemptions in place or exceptions to that six feet of social distance. Those exceptions would be where somebody's getting professional services, like if their hair is getting cut, getting a tattoo, going to the dentist, those types of things. Businesses where employees, the tasks require the employees to be within six feet of each other. While someone is seated at a table at a bar or nightclub, you know, generally you're not six feet away from other people when you're seated around people. It would provide a cap of only being up to eight people at a table at a bar or nightclub, and each table would need to have six feet of separation from any other tables and patrons seated at any other tables. So there would still be a requirement that they be socially distanced from one table to another. And then another exception on the social distancing would be if there's a physical barrier between folks, for example, like plexiglass or a wall or something like that. Moving on next, Section 2.1, well, Section 2 also has provisions, I should say, dealing with masked gatherings. These are dealt with specifically within Section 2.4. It's worth pointing out that Dr. Minz's previous order, that's replaced by this order, there is a process under which there were gatherings, you could have up to 15 people who were within six feet of each other, but then there had to be kind of a bubble, or these were in pods, and then a group of 15, you could have another group of 15 or another pod of 15. There's no limit or cap on the number of people you could have in one place, as long as those groups of 15 were socially distanced at least six feet away from each other amongst the various groups. The change in Dr. Minz's masked gatherings provision would be that there would be a cap at either 100 total people in the masked gathering, or 50% of the fire code capacity, whichever of those two would be lesser. And it would still require individuals to maintain six feet of social distance unless they resided together. And I would clarify, or I'd point out that the order does clarify that certain businesses would fit within this exemption, or would fit, I'm sorry, would fit within masked gatherings. And to better explain that, and I'll try to explain, I think, some of Dr. Minz's reasoning, there are certain businesses where people don't wear masks, they have exceptions to mask-wearing, such as restaurants, bars, nightclubs, fitness centers, and health clubs. And because you're not wearing masks in these businesses, because you may be in close proximity to others for long periods of time, there is a bit of a heightened risk with those uses. That's why they're specifically listed in there as well. There is an exemption saying that retail stores would not be considered masked gatherings. The thought would be, you wouldn't be limiting a grocery store, for example, to only 100 total people on the main floor of the grocery store, but it would still be capped at a 50% of fire code capacity. The thought there would be concerns about ability to social distance. Black Friday is coming up, certainly a lot of people will be shopping at retail establishments, and the aim is to ensure some social distancing. Another, and I would point out, there are the same exemptions that currently, or had previously existed in Dr. Minz's order, would be in place in this order. So religious institutions, election polling places, licensed childcare facilities, schools and their activities, and then also court facilities would also all be exempt under Dr. Minz's new order from the masked gathering restrictions. Moving on to Section 3 of Dr. Minz's order would be provisions dealing with, there are certain activities that are dealt with specifically here. I'll just go through the items that have changed, that are different. Bars, nightclubs, and other facilities licensed to sell alcohol for on-premises consumption would have to abide by 11:00 PM curfew, they'd have to close by 11:00. Restaurants and their in-person dining would have to cease by 11:00 PM. As I noted earlier, those are heightened risk factors because of people not wearing masks being in close proximity to others for extended periods of time, so they've been treated similarly under the order. Also recreational and youth sports activities would still be able to continue, but the attendance would be limited to only two attendees per participant. This particular provision would not apply to collegiate sports or any sporting events or activities governed by the Kansas State High School Activities Associations or any school boards. They would still be the governing entities for those types of events. The order would become effective, or does become effective, beginning tomorrow, Wednesday, November 11th, at 12:01 AM. It would be effective through 11:59 PM on December 31st of this year. No action would be required by the Board of County Commissioners on this order. If the Board had wished to do so, it could either amend or revoke this order with a simple majority vote, and I'd be happy to stand for any questions. Thank you.
I have a question.
Sure.
Okay, so going back to Section 1.2 masks, you talk about makes it incumbent upon businesses and organizations to make reasonable efforts to inform members of the public about the requirement to wear masks. So if someone walks into a business and they're not wearing a mask, we can't just assume, is it, according to this order, I'm asking for clarification, no one is to assume that they have an exemption? Is that what you're saying? Are they required to ask? How are they required by this order to ensure, is the person who isn't wearing a mask required to say, "I have this exemption"? Or, help me understand this.
Commissioner Cruz, I'd be happy to do that. The, I guess first off, for the individual, they would be required to either wear the mask, or if they're not wearing the mask, I think they would need to be prepared to explain why they have an exemption. That doesn't mean they need to say their medical diagnosis or get into any level of that detail. You know, they could just simply say, you know, "I have this, or I have, there's a medical reason I'm not wearing it." They could be succinct, you know, or, you know, if somebody was hearing impaired, they could try to indicate, or, you know, that that's the reason that they are not wearing a mask, as that's one of the exceptions. So there's different reasons in there, and it'd be different for each person. But then it would be a responsibility for the business, not, like you were saying, not to just assume that, oh, well, that person's not wearing a mask, they must have some exception because, you know, it says that the mere existence of possible exemptions doesn't release the business from their duty to ensure that people are wearing masks. So they would be expected to. I think there's a number of things they could do, signage, they could have intercoms that would say, reminder that you need to, you know, comply with the mask requirements in this location. But I would imagine a lot of the cases, if they're seeing a lot of people not do this, it would make sense to potentially approach them and suggest they need to wear a mask or have somebody at the entrance to do that, or even to offer. I think I've seen some businesses that have offered to provide masks to people who don't have one with them. So I think there's different ways businesses could approach that, but they wouldn't be able to just assume that, you know, okay, well, we've got 30% of the people in our store who aren't wearing a mask, they must have some exception. No, they would have to actually, I think, undertake some efforts to ensure their patrons are wearing masks or have a, or demonstrate, or tell them an exception is really what it requires the businesses to do. Does that answer your question, Commissioner?
Yes, that does, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a quick question. So, you know, there's been a lot of work done by Wichita State and Interest Arena. Are their plans still okayed and able to do the functions as they proposed?
It's a good question Chairman, I'll give an initial answer, and then I'd probably defer some in case Dr. Minz wants to expand upon what I say. This order would require them to submit new plans. Those are the two places, the only two that I'm aware of, that have had plans approved by Dr. Minz under his prior order, but conditions have changed. You know, for example, I think one of the events at Interest Bank Arena could have had 3,000 or 4,000 people. Dr. Minz can speak to how comfortable or uncomfortable he feels about that. The thought process would be if WSU, Interest Bank Arena, any of these other large event facilities want to submit a plan, they could do that. I think Dr. Minz may have, you know, concerns about the capacity being too large, but it does, it's definitely not an outright prohibition on them being able to submit a plan. And again, I'd defer if Dr. Minz has anything more specific he'd like to add on that. I think you're muted, Dr. Minz.
Dr. Minz, I am muted. Those proposals were approved back when we had much fewer cases, so in light of the much higher prevalence of the virus in our community and spreading, I think it would be in order to review those again and decide if further reductions in size or restrictions need to be considered. That's all we're saying. Since things have changed, let's review them again and make sure they're where we think they're best.
My comment is that they both have done a lot of work, and I think we've even used some CARES money to help improve distancing and isolations and things like that for least interest. I'm not sure if we've done any for the WSU facility, but, and I know that in WSU's case, they lowered it to whatever that number was, and then they've already sold their season tickets for the, whatever that 4,000 number was, or something like that. Instead of 11,000, they're, whatever it was. So...
And Chairman, I may add to what I said earlier, just to say that I think it was made very clear to those entities that any of their plans that were approved were planned, approved as to that point only, and differing conditions in the future could result in different actions, but I certainly understand the points and concern.
Okay, all right. Thank you for clarifying, so that could be a task we need to undertake quickly for them.
I want to clarify, we're not necessarily saying we want to restrict the numbers, but we want to look at things like concession stands, things like that, how are they going to handle things when people are waiting in lines, things like that. And again, it's because the circumstances have changed, and the community is getting close to capacity, is handling these patients.
Thank you, thank you. Commissioners, and I apologize, I've been so many Zoom calls, if I use your first name, it's no disrespect, I gotta remember to say Commissioner Howell, in this case.
Thank you for the...
I was on mute earlier, Commissioner Cruz, when I called you Lacy, so I didn't get there, so, anyway, okay, back to business. So Commissioner Howell.
All right, thank you Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions. So the way this is written, are we saying that, say someone goes to a retail store, they've got to go to someone that works there and inform them that they have a health exception? What are we asking them to do specifically? I don't understand what the requirements are for an individual that has an exemption for medical reasons. What do they have to do?
Sure. Commissioner Howell, I think it would require the individual, if they don't have an exception, of course, to wear a mask. If they do have an exception, they can go into the facility. At no point does the order say you have to go seek out someone from the business and tell them that you have an exception. I think they would probably, it'd probably be wise for them to be prepared as to how they would answer if they're asked about that, or maybe review the order to see what exemption may apply to them. I think there's, was A through L, so there's a handful of exemptions in there. But I think the real duty is placed on the business to make sure their patrons are, they have stated, specifically stated an exemption in this order. So I think that the duty is more on the business to ensure that folks are wearing the masks and that they're telling them specifically, hey, I have an exemption because of a medical condition, you know, or something very specific like that, as opposed to just assuming they don't. So I think it places more of a burden probably on the business than the individuals, but there is still an expectation the individuals would wear it and would be able to elaborate as to why they're not wearing one if they aren't.
So we're asking our businesses then to basically, anybody that's in their facility to basically police their facility, and they have to basically question someone in the facility to ensure that they're complying with this order, and they've got, they have a new burden of proof to do that, or a new requirement to do that. I'm just imagining, say it's a big box store like Lowe's, they've got a lot of employees, they say someone goes there with an exemption, they might be questioned numerous times while they're on a single visit. Is that what we're talking about, that type of a...
I think it would be up to each, up to each business to decide how they're going to approach that. I'm sure there's a number of creative ways they could do that. I mean, I know a number of stores will ask people upon entrance, but I think to your point, somebody could take off their mask or face covering. And I think it would be up to the discretion of the business in terms of how they may approach that. But I do think that at the very least, they would have to, you can't just let people in, and then let's say, three-fourths of the people in your big box store are not wearing masks or face coverings, and you're just assuming they have an exemption, well, that's blatant non-compliance with the order. You know, if you're not even trying to ask those people, you're not trying to find out. And so I think there's a point to where they would have to have some sort of due diligence and efforts made, whether that's just upon entry or elsewhere.
My expectations, most of these big box stores have some form of greeter at the front door, and they welcome you, and I would say if someone's not wearing a mask, offer it to them, if they say I have an exemption, then they let them in the store. I don't think there'd be continued surveillance within the store, but at the entrance.
And this is directed at businesses and organizations, it's not directed at individuals? Is that correct?
Commissioner Howell, the requirement to ensure that the people are wearing it, yes, it's directed at businesses and organizations. There are separate requirements on individuals to be wearing a mask or face covering, but...
Dr. Minz, the last time you issued an order, I suggested some changes. I would like to see the language simplified regarding when it's necessary to wear a mask and when it's not. And I said simply that when you are around other people, again, especially not your family, we're talking about, you're around other people, you're not part of your family, that when you're not socially distant, you need to wear a mask, and when you're not, when you're not around other people, you don't need to wear a mask. But that doesn't, this doesn't really go in that line once again. This makes the argument, if you're in a facility and if you're the only one within a, you know, a couple hundred feet of yourself, you're the only one there, you still have to wear a mask. Is that, is that what this is saying? So regardless of social distancing, they have to wear a mask in these facilities?
Yes, I think that's in theory a good policy, but in fact, I think human nature is, when you're in a facility like that, it's hard to keep track when people are coming close to you, and, oh no, they're six feet away, it's okay, you can take off the mask, oh no, they're almost here six feet, I guess I'll put the mask back on.
Okay.
I think in reality, if we want to get a control of this, if we want to get control of this epidemic, we're going to have to have better compliance with the mask order. That's one of the things that's been shown to be the most effective in limiting the transmission of this virus.
Well, you kind of opened that, you kind of opened up an idea here. Let me ask you another question then. We have a very large, we have a very, this is a worldwide pandemic, and we have countries all around the world, we've got states all across this nation, we've got cities and counties, and I guess I want to ask you, the trends we're seeing here in Sedgwick County appear to be uniform around the world and around the nation, around the state. Are there any examples of places that you would say have done the things we're talking about here, and have seen some successes? We can say, if we did what they're doing, we would see, we expect we'd have the same successes that they would have. Where's our example out there in light of the trends that are going on everywhere? And you said yourself, we don't know what's causing this, which tells me we don't know the cause and effect. Where's the example out there that says we're following what they're doing because they've got good success?
Well, I can't tell you precisely of all the factors, which one's the most important, that's what I was saying. I think all the factors are contributing to the rise, but I can't tell you which one's 50% of the rise, which one's 10% of the rise. There are many countries who've had this problem and they've got control of it, and I think they've been in literature pretty pervasively, New Zealand, Italy, a lot of European countries that were having...
Taiwan.
So I think there's plenty of examples, if you'd like me to get together some of those article publications, we could do that.
I'm looking at data, trend data from everywhere, and the increase we're seeing right now, and you said also, this maybe this is related to weather, I'll argue maybe it's related to lack of daylight. People are moving back indoors earlier, spend more time indoors for whatever reason, maybe it's colder, but maybe it's just the fact is we have less daylight. And, and of course, we have school, and people are, you know, dealing with different family life right now, school homework, and, you know, it's just a different thing than we had maybe back in July. And so we don't know with cause and effect, there's a lot of things going on here. I also understand, I'd like to hear your perspective on this, I understand that the flu virus actually is lagging what we would consider to be a normal year this year. Anyway, I guess I'm just, I'm concerned about, I hate, I almost hate this analogy, but you know, I think you'll see my point here. There's a lot of people who are very concerned about man-made effect on climate change, and there's a lot of debate whether we should or should not do things to affect climate change. One of the arguments is, we can do a lot of things and maybe has no effect, we don't know. And I kind of, so bringing it back to this discussion, you know, we're doing a lot of things, I don't know what effect this will actually have, because I think there's plenty of examples out there of people doing a lot of things that their trends look very much like our trends. And so I'm concerned about, you know, trying things experimentally, not knowing the cause and effect, and not knowing what's causing our trends to change right now. One thing that, I did get an email earlier, I think yesterday, that talked about some potential penalties. Mr. Wagner, I don't think you've... Mr. Wagner, I don't think you've discussed this yet, but what are the penalties that are potential with this new order?
Well, let me, let me explain, and I am going to be talking about that resolution later during this meeting, and I think Tom had mentioned that a bit ago. The, the resolution that you'll consider in a bit would be if a person, business, organization failed to comply with Dr. Menz's order, and not just this specific order, but any local health, Sedgwick County local health officer order, they could potentially face a, get a citation in county court for a county code violation. The potential penalty on that would be up to a $500 fine plus $20 in court costs, that would be the maximum. There would not be any potential jail time, there can't, county court citations can't result in jail time.
But we have those penalty options right now, is that correct? With our existing order and the previous orders, we've had, we have those penalty options right now?
I would say first, yes, we do, but I think in, there have been some changes made to this. For example, you know, I described how it's incumbent upon businesses to ensure that their patrons are wearing masks. That, the language that was in there, that language was not in Dr. Menz's last order. And, and we, I think there's an interest on Dr. Menz's part to see, to ensure that the business, I mean, he made, he made the comment earlier that, that people are complying with his order, and in an effort to lower the infection rate in the community. And so there has been some language that I think would strengthen the potential enforcement if it came to that, of course. And I haven't, we'll talk about this more a little bit later, but I know that it's something that the counties traditionally, down any code enforcement complaints, whether it be this or something else, is usually inform and educate people, give them an opportunity to correct course. And so I don't think there'd be anything done differently on this than what we've done in similar cases, where we've tried to work with folks and make sure they achieve compliance.
I'll try to wrap up my comments right now, but...
I'll respond.
Yes, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I don't want to leave the impression we're just guessing. I'm, I'm not sure which of the multiple factors is the most important, but I do know in all these factors, people are not wearing the mask to the level that we need to keep this virus from being transmitted. We know as a fact, this virus is transmitted from human to human, from either talking to them closely, touching, sharing secretions, whatever. That is not speculation, that is known. So these orders are written in the effort to reduce the likelihood of that and to hopefully increase compliance with the mask order, which has been proven time and time, is very effective in limiting the virus transmission from person to person.
Okay, any other, any other questions?
I just wanted to ask, the 50% occupancy, that's, that's the same as it was before, is that correct?
Commissioner Howell, I'll seek to address that question. The 50% occupancy before was limited to bars, nightclubs, and restaurants. The, the way that it's worded now, all of those businesses would still be at the 50% provision, but it, the 50% has also been incorporated into the mass gatherings definition. We used to have the unlimited ability to have 15-person pods, multiple 15-person pods, as long as each of the pod was, pods was six feet away from the other pod. Now, it would incorporate that 50% to where your mass gathering is either 100 total people or 50% of the capacity under the fire code, whichever's less. And so, and with six feet of social distancing between folks. So the 50% is now applicable in some areas where it was not before in Dr. Menz's new order.
Okay, and just with that in mind, I guess one of the things I've heard that's causing some of the angst right now is that there's still a continuing discussion that, the nightclubs especially, that they disregarded the occupancy limits. I guess my question would be, why, why have we not pursued, used the power that we have with our current order? Why have we not gone forward and done something? Let me just reference Wichita's mask order. From July 1st until October 21st, I believe they only handed out less than a dozen citations for individuals for noncompliance of mask-wearing. So, you know, we talk about, you know, penalties and, and doing things to enforce these, these ideas, but we're not actually using the tools we have now. So, I put myself in the, in the place of one of these businesses. How, how are they going to know how many people are inside their, their facility, unless they have someone sitting there counting every person that comes in and exits that room, that built, that space? It's a, it's a burden of, of, to figure that out, I guess, or they're just not going to do it. Again, if that's, if they're not going to do it, then what's the point of, of having it in here? And if they are going to do it, I guess that's great, but I guess let me say, we've had this in place now, we're not even trying to enforce it. Well, and the businesses that have already had this requirement, that we think have, have disregarded it, we're not doing anything to enforce it on them, so... I, I, I probably have some more questions here in a minute, I'll start, thank you.
Commissioner Dennis?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the opportunity to speak today. Couple of things, one is on the, on the order, and then I've got some comments that I'd like to make. On the order, it says, under exempt activities, it says religious institutions. And what I want to clarify on that, does that mean religious sacraments? It doesn't have to be in an institution for someone to have, be attending something for a sacrament. And so, I think that needs to be a little bit clarified to make sure that we're exempting religious sacraments also.
Commissioner Dennis, Justin Wagner, again. I, I think that the, that was a limit, that's a provision is specific to mass gatherings. I, I would interpret that and say that it would apply to religious activities as well. I mean, certainly that, if the board would deem appropriate, we could change the language on that. And I don't think it would just be limited to the walls of a religious institution, I think it would include their activities as well.
Yeah, well, things like marriage is a sacrament, so that's what I want to make sure that we're on the same page when we're doing something that involves religious activities. And then I'd just like to make a few comments. I've talked to a lot of people over the last couple days about where we're at today. I talked to the chamber yesterday at length, and one of their concerns is that we still don't have rapid testing up and running yet. And we absolutely have to have that, not only for businesses in order to be able to stay in business, to test their employees, to, to keep their doors open, but also for our schools to, to be able to keep the students in the classrooms. So, every week I ask where we're at with WSU, and I still don't really know where we're at with WSU right now. So, if we're not going to get moving with the rapid testing with WSU, we're going to have to find some other avenue. We've got a lot of money that is sitting there for testing, and we're just not getting where we need to be with the rapid testing, so... And that, that really brings into the issue the contact tracing, and I know that Adrian has talked about contact tracing in the past. Right now, the way that the system is set up, it really disincentivizes anyone from reporting that they're ill. For example, if you're a hourly employee someplace, your livelihood depends on that job. So they're not going to want to report, they're not going to want to get tested, because it's going to impact their livelihood. Somehow, we need to get a handle on contact tracing, and if we could get this rapid testing going and test someone, I think that we need to change our guidance, so that if someone is tested and they're negative, maybe they have to be tested twice in a row, two days or something, that we can get them back into the job, because they're not going to want to report, they're not going to want to tell anyone that they, that they've been around someone, because it is causing a lot of absenteeism. And it also happens in our school districts. I talked to the superintendent from May's School District this morning. Since November 1st, he has 400 people in quarantine right now, 400, since 1 November. That's an addition. Again, if we had rapid testing, and we could test these people, and we would set up guidelines so that if they're tested a couple times in a row, that we can get them back into the classroom. So it is an economic impact, and it is also a school impact. We're harming our kids today because we're not having them in school. I talked to Cheryl Logan this morning, USD 259 is looking at the same issues that we're looking at. They need something to happen, because right now, they just voted last night, a very difficult vote, to stay in remote learning for their middle and high schools. Where we're at today in this situation with the additional folks that are coming down with COVID, it is having a harmful impact on the largest school district in the state. I recently talked, just within the last hour, with Textron. Textron is fully in favor of us taking additional action today in mandatory masks. As a matter of fact, Textron is mandating it for all of their employees. It doesn't matter if they're sitting in their office or they're working next to someone else, everyone has to wear it. And if they are not wearing a mask, they're going to be subject to disciplinary action at Textron, up to all the way included with firing. So that's fairly significant. While I was talking to Textron today, they said Spirit is also on board. So some of our largest manufacturers in this county are on board with us taking some kind of an action, and they all say the same thing, we need the entire community involved in this. It has a significant impact on our economy, it has a significant impact on our mental health of everyone, it has a significant impact on our schools, we need to take some action today. So that's my comments. I fully support us moving forward with some action that we can get a handle on this. And I fully, earlier in the week, I talked with, with the manager, and said, I, I don't know what the data is for us to base a decision on, but the data is here, 21.6% positivity rate, 170, 178 in hospital, 80 in ICU. We're doubling the hospitalization every two weeks. As Dr. Menz said, I'm not sure which one of these actions is going to help, but we've put them all together, we're going to have to do something. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And Commissioner Dennis, I think you'd raise the question about quarantining and the approach it's taken on that. I didn't know if Dr. Menz would want to, I know I'm at the podium, but I didn't know if Dr. Menz would want to comment upon any of that.
Specifically, what question is that, Justin?
I'm trying to think how to paraphrase what Commissioner Dennis was asking about. If somebody is a close contact, they're out of, they're supposed to quarantine for 14 days after that. And I think Commissioner Dennis was asking about the rapid testing, and in addition to getting a negative result and potentially being able to go back into the workforce, I think was the example he was giving.
And let me clarify, if I could. From what I understand, CDC guidance says one thing, that if you're in close contact with someone, you have to quarantine for 14 days. But from what I truly understand, and if I'm wrong, please let me know, but we can modify that CDC guidance. And if we find that we can test someone, rapidly test them today, rapidly test them again tomorrow, and find out they're negative, cannot, we not say that that is the guidance for Sedgwick County, and we can get kids back in school, and we can get people back at work?
In my opinion, yes. If we could get a rapid test that is available to both our businesses and our schools, that would be a major difference. And I'm as frustrated as you as the slowness at which things, this seems to progress. In addition, WSU, there's a national company that is marketing a new test that I know...
Officer, can you help distribution out now? Yeah, I've got a call from you guys.
Hey, Akeem. Akeem Ashford.
There you go. Thank you, Akeem. Sorry about that, Dr. Menz.
It's okay. We're doing a investigation of this new test that's been released by the APID company that, it's a little different than the PCR we're doing, but initial studies show it might be very helpful in the fact that it's fast, it's convenient to do, it doesn't require the nasal-forendial swab, and it would be something that schools and businesses could administer, or maybe even the employees and parents could administer that every morning, and if they're negative, they could possibly come into work at the school. So we're working on it, but unfortunately, the technology is coming out slower than we would like.
Yeah, but if we can get, as I said before, if we can get WSU or someone like that, if we can't get WSU up and running, if we can find someone that can turn around these tests for us very rapidly, can we change and say this is Sedgwick County guidance rather than CDC guidance and get kids back in school and people back at work?
I would personally be comfortable with that. I'll ask the attorneys whether that, if you like, that is acceptable.
That's outstanding. Thank you, Doctor.
Yeah, well, that's encouraging news. Okay, any other, any other questions for Dr. Menz? Yeah, Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of cleanup questions here. A business, let's say an office space, doesn't have, you know, public access where people walking in and walking out, let's just say, say employees in an office space, and they are socially distant from each other at their desks, do they need to wear masks?
All right, Commissioner Howell, Justin Wagner, again. The, if they're working in a place, you're saying that's not open to the public?
Yep.
Okay. If they are, the way that the order is worded is that it requires employees who are working in a space visited by customers to wear a mask, where food's sold, or in a facility managed by the business, it talks about essentially people who are coming in, it doesn't say employees there, and then it says employees in an enclosed area where other people, except people who they reside with, are present and unable to maintain six foot of distance, except for infrequent or incidental moments of closer proximity. So I think in the example you gave, if it's an area that's not open to the public, and if it's an area, and if they're not going to be around other coworkers frequently within six feet, then I don't think that they, a person would, an employee, let me clarify, would have to be wearing a mask in that business.
Let's talk about, thank you for that answer. What about, let's talk about churches for just a minute. There is a listed exemption for churches under the mass gatherings heading. So does, does that mean that they're exempt from the 15-person limit, or the 50% occupancy limit, or the social distancing limit? What are we talking about specifically?
They are, they would be exempted from mass gathering limitations stated in the order, and they would be encouraged to maintain social distancing as much as feasible, and to maintain six feet of social distance, as long as it's not people who reside together. And so, you know, there, there's no requirement upon them to, to limit their capacity, there's no requirement upon them to limit their mass gatherings totals, it's more of encouragement and suggestions. Again, I think that's in deference to some of their constitutional rights.
So the, the enforcement things we talked about earlier, does that apply to just the occupancy aspect, or the mask-wearing aspect, or what, what part of the order is enforceable?
It would be any, any noncompliance or violations of the order, so it's not specific to any one thing.
So if I understand correctly, does a city need to adopt this as a city ordinance for it to be enforceable within the city?
That's correct.
Okay, so cities have some work to do, potentially, if that's what they want to do. Otherwise, otherwise, this is only enforceable through a injunction through county court?
Let me, it would be enforceable through a county court code citation. I mean, there, there may be aspects of this that civil injunction powers could be utilized by the county, but that's...
That would only be against a business or an organization, not against an individual, an individual?
In all likelihood, I think that's correct, yes, Commissioner Howell.
Well, no surprise, I, there are some things about this I think we should take some time at, and I'm disappointed, once again, at Dr. Menz, I appreciate you personally, but I think the county commissioners need to collaborate with you on these orders, and I would like to have opportunity for us to input into these orders before they're just churned out. But once again, I think that the commissioners need to own this, and so, again, I don't like everything in this, I think it's, I understand the, the importance of doing, everybody feels like we have to do something because the hospitals are filling up, and I am concerned about the hospitals very much. That's the number one compelling change that I think gets my attention especially. I still don't have a good handle on exactly what portion of the hospital is Sedgwick County versus outside Sedgwick County. But having said that, let me ask one other question, these might be for Adrian. Do we, do we know what percentage of people being tested right now asymptomatic versus symptomatic?
We do have that information, I don't have that in front of me, but I can get that for you.
Okay, and in terms of getting data, does anybody actually... Okay, and in terms of getting data, does anybody actually capture the data from people who test positive for COVID-19? Does anybody actually ask them and try to collect data on that person's compliance with wearing masks? Other words, do we have any data that says, you know, 50% of people who get COVID-19 are habitually not wearing masks, or they're only 50% compliant, or do we have any data like that whatsoever?
I can check and see that's going to be subjective, because one could say they were wearing a mask, but wear, wear it beneath their nose, but I'll, I'll check and see what, what information we have on that.
Okay. Anyway, no surprise. I don't know if I even get a second for this, but again, I think this is too quick. I'm not happy with everything that's in this, but I would like to make a motion to affirm Dr. Menz's order. And to be clear, Mr. Chairman, I would like to vote no if this gets a second on my motion.
Hey, Commissioner Howell, is there any way that I could address this before we do that?
Certainly.
I haven't had an opportunity to speak yet.
I'd be glad to hold my motion for a while. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I think it's really sad, and I'm sad that we have gotten to this point. Last Thursday, after our meeting, I had a couple of conversations with some physicians around town, and I think that we need to get back to what we're really trying to do is, we know people are going to get sick, it's just the ability for our healthcare system to care for them. So after our meeting on the 5th, a couple of conversations I had, and I just want to read this, because I think we need to humanize this story. This is from a physician at one of our hospitals here. "We are overwhelmed. The key fact is not beds or vents, it's staffing. The more people that come in, take beds for what we normally treat, all cause mortality to go up. More COVID also means COVID mortality goes up. Both hospitals have discussed elective surgeries and are already limiting procedures. Those affect inpatient beds minimally. Truly elective procedures don't get admitted. Strokes, heart attacks, pneumonia, sepsis, kidney or liver failure, trauma, cancer and its complications are also on that list. Those still happen, and we are losing space and staff to care for them while COVID is here. There's no magic solution to the staffing crisis because it's a finite resource normally. Add in that everyone is getting hit with COVID, now it's hard to even get traveling staff. Field hospitals don't solve the problem because there is no one to work them. We need, what we need is action that limits the spread and decreases case volume and spread. People see the numbers and forget that each one of those numbers is a person. We see the person. It's exhausting and painful, especially when they are sick for weeks and die. My biggest battle is to box off my emotions to minimize their leak. I have to stick with objective elements as much as possible. If I didn't, I wouldn't be able to function." This is from a physician taking care of people in our, in our healthcare system right now. Another one that I want to read is, this is from a physician not in, not here in Wichita or Sedgwick County. "Things are desperate. I'm sure we're getting updates from the, from the ground level, but this is bad. We are out of beds in ICU, and we needed to transfer a patient that was in diabetic, in shock, and so there are not any ICU beds within 500 mi, within a 500-mile radius. This is, this is alarming, and right now, we as commissioners are here to help our community. We're here to listen to our constituents, and I don't know about you commissioners, but I have received some pretty sad emails today, and a lot of them, because people are looking for leadership, they're looking for action during this time. That's our job. Unfortunately, it's not going to make a lot of people happy, but right now, we are here to try to find solutions." So I, I don't know. Trying to pick apart this order, to me, I believe that this order, I've described a couple of times to people, it's kind of like leaves in my yard. We can literally toss it up and throw it down, because if we don't communicate it and we don't enforce it, then it's worthless. So we have got to devise a plan that is different than we have communicated before, because we're not communicating, we're not enacting anything really that's different than what we've already done. And here we are, at a 21.6% test rate, 178 people in our hospital with a potential to double to 300 in two weeks' time. I feel like it's time, I, I'm excited to talk about enforcement next, because that's really what's going to matter. And so that's the conclusion of what I'd like to say as of right now, and I appreciate the time to say it, but we have to come together, work together, and follow the rules. That's it. Thank you.
Could I add something, Mr. Howell?
Yeah.
I agree with you. There's a lot of things in this order I don't like, and unfortunately, I don't like the options even worse. So I don't, I don't find any pleasure in having to make this order in terms of satisfying my authority or anything. I'm only recommending these things in order to get on the other side of this epidemic.
Let me comment. Look, I understand everything, this is well-intentioned, and it's, it's very difficult to, to do this. I understand that, and I, and I appreciate, appreciate your, your efforts on this as well, Dr. Menz. I do have one question, this might be for Justin, but I think he stepped away from the, from the podium, but my question is, this is actually from a business owner that's commenting to me over my cellphone, asked a question. What happens if, he has a retail space, what happens if someone comes in and they're not wearing a mask and he questions them, you know, about the mask, and they refuse to put one on or leave the business? Are they supposed to call the police, or what are they supposed to do at that point?
Justin Wagner again. I think that, I mean, I guess I would start off by saying, I think each business would, could make their own determination, I don't think there's any one thing that a business would do there. But I think there would be a number of options they could take, you know, whether it would be talking to the person, telling them they need to leave, you know, they certainly, I think reaching out to law enforcement may be extreme, but I do want to point out a couple of things, which would be, first off, that the aim, I think, of the order is to get businesses to comply, to get individuals to comply, to reduce the spread of COVID-19. You know, that's, it's a, it's not to penalize any and every, enforce any and every violation that may occur. The aim is to, is to reduce the transmission of COVID-19. And in the situation you explained, you know, I think that businesses have different approaches and ways they may approach that with their legal counsel in terms of how to apply it. I did want to point out something that I think a number of businesses do, and I know, I think you and other commissioners have probably heard about this over the past few months, is there's nothing in this order that keeps businesses from just saying, if you don't wear a mask, you can't come into our business. Several businesses do that, you know, kind of a no shirt, no shoes, no service type of policy, but applying it with masks. And there's nothing in this that would require that, but there's also nothing that would prevent it. So the reason I, I'm not answering and saying X, Y, and Z is exactly what the business should do, is because businesses have all different kinds of ways they could approach that hypothetical you mentioned, and I think, you know, I think it would be incumbent upon them to have a plan on how they're going to do with it, and if they have questions about legally what would be okay, I think they would consult with legal counsel as to how to approach it.
Any other questions, comments? I don't see any. Commissioner Howell, you were --
Yes, if I get a second or not. Again, I just think that commissioners, as elected officials of Sedgwick County, as a city, as a board of health, we should have responsibility to issue these orders, and so, again, I, the timing of this, if we had some time to work on it, maybe I'd support something, but right now, as is, with, you know, having just seen this today, it's had some changes even since yesterday. We got it yesterday, late in the day, and some changes have happened since then. I would like to have some time to work on, I guess, what I consider to be a better version of this, but in the meantime, I would rather have the commissioners affirm the order rather than just be issued by our health officer. So again, I will intend to vote no on this, but I may make a motion, we would affirm Dr. Menz's order that he presented today.
With that said, I would like to make a substitute motion. Bear with me as I explain it.
Chairman, I don't believe that he got a second on that motion that he made.
Okay. I don't, I didn't hear a second either. So that motion dies for lack of a second. I would like to make a motion, though, that, based on, and you all can make reference on the, on the final page, section, on the last page, section five, possible review amendment I looked into House Bill 2016, which has been referenced quite a bit, and in there, it points out a couple of places where --
Hey, Chairman, do you have something on in the background?
No, I do not. There.
Okay, sorry. Thank you.
Somebody has their microphone. There you go. Okay. All right, anyway, House Bill, the famous House Bill 2016. In it, a couple of different places, it says specifically that it, the, the orders may be reviewed, amended, or revoked by the Board of County Commissioners of any county affected by such order. That's on even page 53 or 54, 53 of the, of the House Bill. I also found it interesting that on page 54, I can quote it exactly, but talking in relation to such officer, meaning identified as, as Dr. Menz, shall make an investigation of each case of all of these things, smallpox, diphtheria, typhoid, blah, 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 and other such infectious disease, acute, acute infectious contagious or communicable diseases as may be required. And shall, it says, again referring to Dr. Menz, or the health, health officer, and shall use all known measures to prevent the spread of any such infectious contagious or communicable disease. Then it goes on to eventually say again, that we as the Board of County Commissioners may review, amend, or revoke. In the House Bill 2016, nowhere does it say that the commission is required to affirm, which has been a motion that's been not seconded the last couple of times, but to follow House Bill 2016, and based on all the efforts that Dr. Menz has, has put into this, and his awareness of trying to make it the best we can for our community to, to try to control it and keep things as open as possible, I'm going to, I'm going to make a motion that we have, that the Sedgwick County Commission has reviewed the order as presented.
I'll second the motion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second, that we have reviewed the motion as presented. Any other comments? Mr. Howell, if you're trying to talk, you're muted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a comment, again, review is not agreement, so I'll be glad to support your motion, but doesn't mean that I support the motion as, or I'm sorry, support the order as presented.
Okay. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Commissioner O'Donnell? Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
So the motion carries four to one. Dr. Menz, thank you again for all your efforts, and very, very, very difficult times, very difficult.
Chairman, this is Justin Wagner. I don't think you voted on the roll call, so for the record, I didn't know if you wanted to vote on --
Oh. I said aye. I thought I said aye.
Your mic just cut out when you said it.
Okay. Aye, without. Okay. Again, okay, so next item is, Justin, I think you're still up.
Yes. Chairman, again, Justin Wagner, Assistant County Counselor, and I've presented this, I know I've emailed a copy to all of you commissioners, and I have copies available here as well, if there is anyone in the room who would need to get them, of a resolution draft. This resolution, if it would be, and we've already discussed it some, but I'll go through the full explanation, if approved, this resolution would apply within the unincorporated area of Sedgwick County, make it a violation of an order or non-compliance or violation of Dr. Menz's order able to be prosecuted as a violation of the Sedgwick County Code. The county, and it would be able to be prosecuted within the Sedgwick County Court. The county court is a specific court for violations of county codes and resolutions. Due to home rule powers, the Kansas Constitution vests with cities, and also limitations on home rule powers for a resolution like this on the county's end, this could only apply within a city's city limits if their governing body would grant jurisdiction and agree to have it apply within their city limits. And so if they would, if a city would do that, then it could be prosecuted if there's a violation within that city's city limits. As this resolution is drafted, any violations or non-compliance with the order would be subject to a maximum fine of $500 plus $20 in court costs. These would be considered unclassified misdemeanors under state law that cannot result in someone receiving jail time. If the Board would approve this resolution, it would take a simple majority vote, and I would refer to County Manager Tom Stoltz in terms of any comments he may want to make on any complaint, enforcement, protocol that might be followed if this would be adopted as well, or if you wanted to save that for questions, I defer to the Board and also Tom.
Okay. Tom, I think it'd be helpful if you give some background as well, please.
Commissioner Stoltz, County Manager. We have talked about this for the last several weeks, and if, and I've talked with legal staff extensively about this. It's my understanding that if we move forward with this, that this resolution gives the county the ability in unincorporated county area to enforce this using county staff. If municipalities, any municipality within the county wishes to be part of this enforcement effort, that they would have to run it by their governing bodies as well, and essentially give us permission to come into municipalities to, to enforce. The way we see this logistically working out, at least in Wichita, and I have had some discussion with city manager on this, the way we see this playing out in Wichita is that people who see what they think to be a violation in the community, and specifically if that person is a law enforcement officer or an official, they could notify, we'll set up a mechanism where they can notify the Health Department, who, that would then trigger us sending a letter of warning to that business establishment to start this process. Any further violation that they see, the police entity within that jurisdiction, within that municipality, would make a miscellaneous report or some other type of report with their observation of what they're seeing, and that would be routed to the Health Department, and then on to legal to construct the complaint, which would then be served by an inspector, probably at MABCD, to that particular business, and allows us to prosecute them in county court. So this is, what you're considering today is our first enforcement effort. It only gives us enforcement powers as it stands today in unincorporated county, and any enforcement within cities has to be, has to come from them. So, does that make sense?
Yeah, and Tom, to be, to be clear, the way it'd be structured, if a city, if any of the 20 cities in Sedgwick County would choose to, to adopt this order or one similar with their language, what you talked about, if there's a, if there's a, I would guess, my discussions with some of the law enforcement as well, a really bad violation of the order, it's, it's really the, it's a law enforcement person would have to file the complaint with the county, with the Board of Health, with the Health Department. It's not just a citizen-driven complaint.
That's correct, sir. That person, whoever, whoever we use the information from to file the complaint, has to be able to come to court and testify. has to be able to come to court and testify, if it is, if it goes to, to trial, would have to testify, just like a law enforcement officer does on any other violation, or any other health inspector does on any other violation, they have to come to court and testify to the truth of the matter.
Right.
So, can I, can I ask a question real fast?
Commissioner Cruz, please.
We had, we had one club owner who received a violation notice of the previous order, and we were informed of another violation on October 31st. So how do we, how do we ensure that those people who are blatantly not following this order, and who have already received an order, how are they handled?
That's a good question, I'm gonna bring Justin back up to answer the legal technicality of that. I would think, and I'll let Justin correct me if I'm wrong, but since this is a new order, we start anew, that particular owner would receive a warning letter if they violate, I don't know, let Justin correct if that's wrong. And then, we send out notices to law enforcement, let's say Wichita brings forth a matter on a, a business, and we cite that business and push them toward county court. That municipality, that the city of Wichita in that instance, would get notice that we're pushing that, and if an officer saw a subsequent violation, they know that, that they know that they've already received a warning letter, they know they maybe already have been cited once, we'll communicate that back and forth between jurisdictions as we move through this. We're really not anticipating having to use this very much, we hope we don't, but we have to have some type of tool in a toolbox for these blatant examples where they are not even remotely close to adhering to Dr. Menz's order. So, Justin, you want to talk about Commissioner Cruz's exact?
Sure. Commissioner Cruz, Justin Waggoner, Assistant County Counselor, again, to your question, and I'm not gonna get into specifics on any specific complaint that's been made, but I, I think, I think what Tom explained would be how traditionally these complaints would be handled, notice of warning letters, there's nothing in the, the resolution that would require us to go through that step, I think that's a pretty typical process, that a warning letter is issued, so I don't think it would have to be followed on, on every case or every instance, there may be one-time events where, let's say somebody was having a parade, well that's clearly in violation of Dr. Menz's order, a warning may not do what you need it to, so you might, you might tell them, hey, don't have your parade two days from now, but you're not gonna be able to send them a warning letter after the fact and, and make any difference in terms of negating the public health detriment of that event. So, I, I guess what I would say is it wouldn't be a requirement that that occurred, but that would be the standard practice, exactly like Tom suggested. One thing I did, I neglected to say when I talked about this earlier, is also another component that would happen if any cities would opt in to this process, would be, and it's mentioned in the resolution, an agreement entered into between the Board of County Commissioners and that governing body for this, this enforcement process. This, this is similar to an approach that's been used through a handful of departments, including whether it's fire services, MABCD, animal control, there's various services, it's usually with second and third-class cities, usually not with bigger cities like the city of Wichita, but there's no reason it can't be handled in a similar fashion as to what's been proposed today.
And Justin, since you're up there, I did have a question come in around, Commissioner Dennis earlier talked about weddings and religious services, so can you please classify, or clarify, excuse me, weddings and funeral services?
Sure, I, I would, I mean, I think the distinction could be drawn if they're, you know, if it's a religious gathering or event, I think it would be exempt from the mass gatherings requirement. A traditional wedding, let's say for example, the wedding was in a church, well that's gonna be exempt from the requirements, but if they're having a reception at a, a business that's not a religious event, and it's just simply a reception, I, I, I think the interpretation would be that's not a religious gathering, that's just simply a celebration of the, the wedding that already occurred. So I think that's a, a distinction that could be drawn there, if it helps answer your question, Commissioner Cruz.
So what, if you don't have a wedding in a church?
I don't think it would have to be in a church, I think it would, I think the exemption would, there'd be a religious activity or, or character to it. I, I don't know that, that gets into some pretty fine points in terms of if you're talking about if, you know, there, there was no religious connotations to it, I, I can't tell you that I have a, a precise approach that we would take to that, but I, I think that the, the best practices would still be encouraged on any of those weddings.
I mean, there are some people in our community that don't, I mean, I don't practice religion, and I do, but I don't feel like if somebody who wants to get married but doesn't practice a religion, I don't know, I just kind of might get dicey.
I, I think I can understand the, the concerns, Commissioner Cruz, and, and I think those events would still be subject to the mass gatherings requirements. The, the, the idea behind the exemption from the mass gatherings requirements for any religious activities would be, you know, a nod to the constitutional rights that are, that are at issue there, and, as opposed to a, a nonreligious event or gathering of any type, whether wedding or something else.
So what if someone has a religious ceremony, a wedding, and then they have their reception at the church?
I would still think if it's, if it's part of the event there, I realize it's not necessarily tied to the, to the church, but I would, I don't think that we're gonna be enforcing this order in churches. I mean, I think that's highly unlikely, that, that would be something that the, the county would do on this order because of the protections, constitutional protections would be afforded, and, and that may raise, I think it's hard to separate the two if it's still occurring there, but I, I think you raised some good questions on that in terms of how we would apply it.
That's all the questions I have, Justin, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else got any questions?
Yes, I have one, Mr. Chairman.
Sure. Yes.
And can, Justin, can you please explain the differences between section three and section four?
Sure, you're talking about the resolution, Commissioner Howell?
Yes, sir.
Sure. The, the first would be, section three talks about a violation of, of Dr. Menz's order. Section four says a violation of the local health officer's order as amended by the Board of County Commissioners. So for example, if today, instead of just reviewing Dr. Menz's order, the vote of the Board of County Commissioners had been to pass a resolution that would have amended it in three or four ways, the, the idea would be that that order, as modified by the Board of County Commissioners, could be prosecuted in county court. It wouldn't just rely solely upon Dr. Menz's original order, because it wouldn't be in place anymore, it'd be a modified version that the Board of County Commissioners had amended.
I noticed that, so, so a section four as currently written doesn't have any real purpose at the moment, because we did not amend Dr. Menz's order. Second of all, the order that it's referencing, it's assumed that we're talking about the order that we just discussed moments ago, but it hasn't referenced it with any type of, you know, date, or number, or anything like that.
That, that's correct, Commissioner Howell, the thought behind this is that this would be a resolution, there would be a standing resolution that would be in place in the county code, and, and let's say two years from now, something completely unrelated to COVID-19, if Dr. Menz issued an order and somebody would violate that order, there'd be the potential for prosecution in county court, so it's not specific to the, the order that we've discussed today.
So this is not really tied necessarily to COVID-19 specifically, it's tied to just, really just passing, if you will, enforcement powers of Sedgwick County under, under, under our statutory home rule, that's creating a new opportunity for us to find individuals, businesses, and organizations.
I, I think that would be correct, as it stands right now, under state law, there, there are powers that are vested in the local health officer to issue orders or take other actions, with a few exceptions, I think a violation of a tuberculosis order, if I remember correctly, and I, I think some other, if I remember right, the quarantine, violation of a quarantine order, there's, with, with the exception of something like those items, just general orders that may be issued under KSA 65202, or 65119, dealing with all known measures, powers, or public gatherings prohibitions, there's no statute in Kansas that makes violation of those a crime. And so, this would make there, at least the ability in county court for there to be an enforcement of that.
I know this is being a little bit nitpicky, but in that section, section three, and in section four, it, it talks about issue order, an, an order issued by the Sedgwick County Health, Local Health Officer to prevent the spread of an infectious contagious or communicable disease. Again, with all due respect, what we're doing with these health orders is not preventing the spread, it's, it's helping to slow the spread, try to mitigate the transmission, but it's not, it's not preventing the spread, I think that's the, that's not the, probably the best word to use in that sentence, in my opinion.
I, I will respond, that's statutory language, that I drew that off of, but, but I understand the point you're making.
Thank you.
Okay. We've all been under a lot of comments and encouragement to help, there's a lot of confusion, I would say, about this enforcement area, and I think the, the cities, the twenty cities in, in the county would like to have a tool to be able to enforce if it, if and when, or if it's ever needed, especially by the, by the, by the, if there are some real troublemakers. Anyway, I, I think this is a positive step for us to take, so if, unless there's other comments, I would make a motion that we approve the, this order, this resolution as presented by Justin.
I'll second the motion. I want to make, I want to make sure we're clear, though, that, again, we've got to be able to communicate this effectively, and at the end of the day, it's going to come down to the cities within our community and our county that will vote to enforce this. I feel like we have to either start following the rules or face these fines. Our community is in a critic, is at a critical point, we are absolutely needing further, it's leaving me speechless, let me just say that, what's happening in our community, an overwhelming amount of people have reached out to me, and so I think that this is the right step, I just hope that we're able to communicate it in a fashion that is easily understood by our community, and the fact that wearing a mask, socially distancing yourself from others, and hand washing and hygiene is what's going to get us through this. So I'll, I'll second that motion.
Good. Just, and I'd also remind that this is not a citizen-driven complaint, this is not a quote snitch line that we went through, this will be coordination with the cities and their law enforcement people within their cities. So, Chris, you're out?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, so, references, and Justin, I apologize if you've already covered this, I don't know that you covered with, with as much detail as I would like, I guess, but it talks about, it'll be a violation of, the section shall be classified as a class one offense within section eight dash five of the Sedgwick County Code, can you please describe that with a little bit more clarity for me, please?
Sure, I'd be happy to do so, Commissioner Howell, probably, I should have maybe described that in a little more detail, class, it's, it's a class I offense, section eight dash five is the, let me back up, the Kansas statute says if you have a county court and a county code violation process like we do in Sedgwick County, you're supposed to list all your fines for offenses in one place. Section eight dash five of our code is that one place, and it lists out the, by offense type, I think it's from A to I, what, what type of, how much of a fine you can have on a first, second, or third offense, class I is the highest level of offense, it has a $500 fine for any, whether it's first, second, or third, it's a $500 fine is the maximum that can be imposed on that. Again, you could certainly have a lesser amount, either worked out through plea arrangements, or, you know, if, if the charges would be dismissed, you know, the, the person wouldn't know anything, so there are opportunities and options there, it doesn't just mean that somebody's for sure gonna get $500, they of course have their right to trial as well. And I think Tom's coming up here, I don't know, did you want to say something, Tom?
Sure. Chairman and Commissioner Tom Stoltz, again, just a comment regarding Commissioner Cruz's statement, and then the Chairman's. The intention would be if you pass this today, that we will reach out to all city managers or administrators within the county, and police chiefs, if they have that function in their municipality, communicate this, this, this enforcement opportunity or, or option, and step them through the process if they, if they would like to do so. So we do plan on doing some external communications depending on the action of the commission today.
So, just for clarification, if, if a city does not adopt this, is they, is a county court enforcement allowed to go into the cities and do any type of enforcement inside the cities at all?
I don't believe we are allowed to do that.
Or not?
We're not.
If a city does adopt this, and they find a violation, does it still go to county court?
Yes.
And they're gonna go to county court, so the fines would be assessed by the county and be paid to the county?
That's correct.
And, but it would be enforced by the city police officers?
Well, it would be, it would, this is going to require a partnership between the county and, and whatever city chooses to do this. When you say enforcement, the initiation of the complaint would have to come from an officer within that municipality, then go to the county, and we would do the enforcement and on the backside of pushing it through to county court, serving the complaint, and then taking it, stepping it through the court process, so it's a joint, shared effort.
And is there any type of schedule gonna be defined regarding the, the ratcheting of, as this starts out with a warning, and then the second offense does something higher than that, and ultimately ended up at $500? Is there some type of a schedule that will be defined, so that we know, they don't go just from, the first offense would be $500, and then, and then secondly, even though these are potentially coming from city, city actions, there's still no jail time options for, for these violations, and I don't know what happens if someone doesn't pay the fine? I guess those are all my questions here.
I'll get to everyone except the last one, the, the county court does not allow jail time, the county court, I believe, has no schedule, the judge has discretion on everything from zero up to $500, they cannot go above that. And then maybe I'll have Justin hit the last part of that, I'm not sure.
And again, I, I might, this is something Tom wouldn't have, wouldn't have come across, I don't think, previously, but I believe there is a county code provision in our, it's been a few years since I prosecuted in county court, but I, I believe there's a provision that if somebody goes to trial and is found guilty, the judge is supposed to impose at least 50% of the fines, so with this offense, if somebody would go to trial and lose, I think the judge's hands would be tied in terms of at least administering a $250 fine. So I think it'd be between 250 to $500. I would point out also on that, that, you know, the, the standard approach that Tom mentioned, I, I think the intent would be there'd be a letter sent to these folks, probably with a copy of the order, explaining the behavior that may have occurred contrary to the order, so I don't think this is going to be a case of, you know, the folks didn't know, it was a simple, you know, oops, we didn't know, I think they're, they're gonna be well-informed as to their need to comply with the order. And, and Commissioner Howell, what was your last question? Oh, if they don't pay, sorry. You'd asked about if they, if they fail to pay, if they would go to jail. There is no requirement in county court that if you fail to pay, you'll just go to jail, however, judges do have contempt powers, including the judges in county court. Quite often what they will do, if somebody, if somebody misses a court date, or somebody misses a court date where the judge has told them to either pay or appear on a fine, then they could be placed in jail for contempt of court, but that's not part of the penalty that's, that's included in county court, and that would be because of their, their failure to listen to a judge.
Again, so assuming they go to court and they do all, you know, they, they get a judgment, but they have to pay a fine or whatever, if they don't pay that fine, what's the consequence at that point?
Well, I guess what I would point out first off is that be in the judge's hands, but traditionally, I think the county has been very patient with folks in terms of trying to give them time to pay off fines and court costs. It's not a situation, I, I know there are some courts where every single continuance or court hearing adds on to your court costs, I mean, I've seen various municipalities where you get $80 to $100 for every court appearance that are added on to your court costs, which adds up quickly. Our county court doesn't have anything like that, statutorily, we're limited to $20 in court costs on our case, cases, so.
I guess my final question would be, you know, Wichita passed a mask order that had fines attached to it, although they didn't really hand out hardly any tickets for it, but they did have an ordinance for a mask order, and they didn't, didn't require this to be passed by the county, so what's, do the cities not have the, the constitutional home rule power, they could go ahead and do this without the county passing this at all?
You know, and I'm, I'm not an attorney for a city, so I'm not as familiar with their, with their statutes, but I, I do think they'd have the authority if they wanted to pass something like this. For what it's worth, you know, the, it's a bit outdated now, but I think the city of Wichita has an ordinance on file, that's been on file for a few decades, I believe, that back when the city used to have a health department that would make a violation of that city health director's order, or regulations, I think it's called, able to be prosecuted within Wichita Municipal Court. And so I think there would be similar powers, it is a little bit awkward, and I don't know how their attorneys, whether it's the city of Wichita or any of the other the city of Wichita or any of the other cities, would feel about their authority to do that based on Dr. Menz being a county actor and not an actor within their municipality. I don't know if they have any heartburn with that or, or question their ability to bring that. But, you know, Dr. Menz is a county actor, so I think that those concerns aren't as much present, at least with our office on this particular resolution.
All right. Thank you for answering my questions.
Sure.
Chairman, I've got some questions. Justin, my first question is from our health director over here in the chat. What happens if a business continues to be fined because the fine is worth the revenue?
I mean, I think that's a, you know, I think that's a possibility you could see. I won't get into crazy amounts of detail, but another option, I think I mentioned it a little bit earlier, is there is always the option for a civil injunction if a business in that situation would continue to not comply with the order, where you get a court order, you know, essentially directing them to comply with Dr. Menz's order. So I think there would be options there that could be pursued by the county.
Okay. Another question would be, is there a way that we could draft up something our cities could use for outlying cities to speed up the process should they decide to want to join the enforcement effort, a particular MOU or something that we could enact, that we could help them with in order to speed this process along, considering we need to do something now?
I think we could do that. We've, we've got a template of sorts that could be utilized in this case. It's, it's quite similar. I mentioned how we've got agreements with second, third-class cities on other county services. It's really quite similar because a lot of the same statutes involve same concepts, or at least similar concepts. So I think that could be accomplished, yes.
Okay. And then the third thing that I have is really relating to communication. I'm kind of, I, I want to make sure that, you know, everybody understands gyms, restaurants, alcohol establishments, those kinds of places, what this new order entails. So what sort of communication will be sent directly to these businesses in an easy-to-understand fashion so that we can make sure they, they are aware of what the order is and how it has changed? And then if, if the enforcement mechanism is agreed upon by our cities in Sedgwick County, will that, in addition to the order, will the enforcement mechanism be communicated as well? So if we don't have all cities on board yet, could we send out one communication talking about the order so that we know they actually get it? Not everybody follows social media. Not everybody's online. So I want to make sure that people get it in their mailbox and then do the same thing once the enforcement with our city partners comes to fruition.
And Commissioner Cruz, I see Tom, Tom Stoltz is nodding his head. Did, Tom, did you want to speak and answer that in more detail? Tom's nodding his head and saying that the manager's office can make sure all that happens.
Okay. One, one other thing I just want to state for the record on this call is that, you know, we, we do have a lot of people that go across county lines. We have a lot of people who work in Butler County or all over this state. I, I have family in Lebette County. We all have a lot of different people in a lot of different counties in this state. I think it's important that we, I have reached out to the KAC, and I hope that we can figure out a way to communicate with other commissioners, other elected officials. I think it's important our whole entire community gets on board with this, as that's the only way, I mean, community meaning state. So that's, that's really just communicating it well and making sure, going back to getting it in people's mailboxes, that they can have an opportunity to call us with questions and have a piece of paper in hand that says, okay, hey, here's, here's who I call with any questions that I have. So I know that was a little discombobulated, but I do hope that we have a communication mechanism in place, ready to go, because we have agreed to this order, or we have reviewed it, I will say. So hopefully that's going out when, Tom?
Commissioner Cruz, this is Akeem, Communication Director. I'm actually pulling together a, a list of my team members. We're going to meet this afternoon, and then we'll hopefully have something to you early tomorrow.
Thank you.
What Akeem said, Commissioner.
Thanks, Akeem.
Okay. Yeah, Commissioner Howell?
Just one final question. This might lead to Justin again. So we've settled on this particular reference for a penalty from our Sedgwick County Code. Were there, were there other options available? Or is this the least option in our code that's available for violation like this? Or was this something that's above the, the minimum, minimum penalty option?
There are other options available, Commissioner Howell. You know, so the, the fine, $500 under our current code language is the most that could be charged. And so there, if you go lower, the, the higher up the alphabet you go, the higher the classification of offense. So there are less dollar amounts for class A through H, differing amounts. I can get that in more detail if you would like. I'm trying to look on my phone here to see.
How, how, how was it that we settled on this particular proposed fine? I mean, is it, do we have, someone have a discussion about this? Or, I'm not that familiar with that part of our county code. I guess I'd like to know what the other options are.
Sure. I mean, I'll start off by telling you the other options backwards in the alphabet. The next highest classification, class H, would be $150 for a first offense, $300 for a second offense, and $450 for a third offense. The next one above that is class G, which would be 75, 150, or 225. There's other classifications as well. So I, I'd be happy to go through those if you would like me to, or, you know, see, see if you have any other specific questions.
I'll just say to my colleagues, I guess I wish we would review that and, and have a discussion about the appropriate level of penalty that should be in this order.
What do you think, what do you think an appropriate level is?
Well, I think 500 is a little steep. I don't think that's the right number. I would like to know what the other options are, but I think 500 is not the right number.
Well, it goes from $5 all the way to $500. First offense.
Twenty, twenty-five.
Twenty, thirty, forty, fifty, seventy-five, 150, and 500.
About $25.
Do you think people are going to take this seriously for a $25 fine?
I do.
Hey, let's just bring this back then. And can, Justin, if, if we, if we pass this, we can always come back and, and do a different class?
That's correct, Chairman. We could always amend it. You guys could amend it today if you wanted to as well. Certainly up to the will of the Board.
Well, there's a, there's a motion and a second on the floor. Unless there's more debate about the size of fines, I'm ready to call for a vote. Being known, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you.
Commissioner O'Donnell? Commissioner Dennis?
Talking to me, yes. Okay. I said no, but no.
Commissioner Dennis?
Agreed, aye.
Commissioner Howell?
No.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meister?
Aye. Okay, the motion carries three to two. I just want to remind everybody that the reason we're having this meeting today is, again, the, this is Tuesday after incredible escalation of hospitalization as a regional hospital centers for this region. And they are, they are professionally alarmed, if I can use the right words. I know that we get quoted a lot lately with our individual words. But, but this is something that is the next step. Let's hope that it can get it under control and back off a little bit. But I'm really sorry that our community's experiencing that. I've actually got a letter that I am sending out later today or tomorrow morning to the, to all of our counties that have patients that are in our hospital, in our regional hospital. I think there's as many as about 16 counties. So I'm going to share a letter with them that they at least understand that their citizens are coming into our hospitalization and anything that they can do for awareness with their citizens and, and help as a region. We seem to do well as a region on economic development and a lot of other things. And maybe we can, as a region, kind of get this under control a little bit, and so we're, we're better for it as a people and as a citizenry. Also remind that tomorrow, there is some veterans' events going on. And so encourage everybody to, to join if you can and respect those that have served today and have served in the past. So has anybody else got anything to add? Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we wrap up, I did bring up the CDC guidance, and it looks like Dr. Menz agreed with me on changing that. I'd like to see if our health director, Dr. Menz, and our manager can work together to come up with the new guidance. So that's one thing. The other thing is I need to know where we're at on rapid testing. I ask every week, and we're still not there. So as soon as possible, we need to find out what we need to do to get rapid testing moving. And if WSU isn't the answer, then we need the answer to that. The third thing is I appreciate that Akeem is working on our communications direction. I have a little concern with Commissioner Cruz's direction to send out a letter to everyone, because I'm not sure that, right now, we don't have any enforcement within the city of Wichita or in a lot of areas. I, if we, if we can't get the communications out without you sending a letter, I'm not sure that that is the most valuable tool. But I do believe that communications is vital. So rather than taking directions from the commission, I think that we need to have the manager and our communications director come up with the best means that we can use to get the word out with what kind of actions that we have taken today, both on enforcement and on the new order. So those are some things that we need to work right away. I hope on Thursday, when we have our next special meeting, that I can have some answers to those. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Any other comments from commissioners? And I know this has been a rather lengthy meeting. We've got a couple of things done. And so we will, with nothing else to be said, we will go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Meeting is adjourned.